Good evening, good evening. Hey, Rob.
Can you hear me now?
I hear somebody.
It's Kathy.
Right.
Okay. You look like you have a hat on.
Yeah. That's what I expect the gazebo to look like tomorrow, Wednesday morning.
Yeah, Thursday.
Finally, a snowy winter.
Yeah, I know. It's been been a bunch of years. All right, I'm busy arranging everybody. I think we're waiting for Eva here for a few moments.
Do you have all the council present?
Waiting for Eva.
Okay.
Well, you're really pushy tonight, Kathy.
Yeah.
I didn't think I was gonna make it. I was helping a friend fix a water heater and I ran out of time.
Good to know.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. I'll need someone to help with the water heater.
Oh, I called Steve.
Oh, yeah, that was your help was calling Steve.
Well, and not not and finding the water. I did do that.
Right.
Come on.
Okay, I give her a couple more minutes here. There we go. All right, let's do it. Welcome, everybody, to the February Town Council meeting. Calling it to order, first of business will be approval of the agenda. Someone want to move to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Peter has moved. And who's seconding?
Eva.
Okay, Eva, thank you. Okay, the agenda as as provided and has been altered in only one way. And the next meeting is not today, the next meeting is next month. So, March 10th, otherwise it's the agenda that was distributed. Any comments on the agenda? Hearing no comments on the agenda, we'll consider it approved. Do it that way, as long as I remember how to do it. Okay.
Do you have a full council? I can't see.
Yes.
Yes, everyone is here. We have Counselor Rob Gilmore, Mary Warfield, Eva Patron, Peter Negrad, Barbara Romando, and Chris Grisham. They're all here.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
I should. Okay, because it wasn't it wasn't working. Okay, just checking, sorry.
Okay. So, I because this is the first meeting, we're going to operate under Robert's Rules of Order. I consulted with the council and prepared a an orders orders of the of the meeting statement, which I'm going to deliver to everybody now. So I included in the document folder for the meeting, a one-page table of motions that are most frequently used, and many of which we we probably won't even use. But let's see, I've stopped the share, have I? No. Make sure I stop the share. Stopped it, right? Yes. Okay, so and Robert's Rules of Order looks like, sorry, looks get in front of me, looks like this. It's that thick. It has almost 100 and not 100, it almost has almost 600 pages. So that's what it consists of, but we won't be using this one hopefully ever. We do have a Robert's Rules of Order newly revised, and this newly revised the current version, but this is in brief. It's only that thick, and the printing is a little bit larger. This really contains everything that we will conceivably be using. But this is much more than we actually will be using. I think we all expect as far as it goes. All right, so it's important to tell everybody, we're going to have a learning period here until the council and everyone is and I and enough comfortable with with the rules. So let's all be patient while we figure it out. So let me now move on to other aspects of the meeting. We continue to encourage residents who want to provide their input to the town on the town to the mayor and council to do so in writing at the single email address you mostly all know about. It's it's in the bulletin and it's on the website. Also, any residents making public comments in person are strongly urged to also provide those comments in writing, whether before or after the the meeting. That is because it makes it much more if you want your comments to be reviewed by the council members and myself. Having them in writing is a much, much preferred additional option. Okay, residents will continue to be able to comment publicly in person. The public appearances is still at the top of the menu, during which now residents may comment on any matter, whether or not it's listed on the agenda for three minutes. The council is going to listen to your comments. They're going to take note of your comments. And when the if the matter that you're speaking to comes up later in the agenda, they may refer to your comments while they discuss the council discusses the matter. Residents will be allowed to speak only once at the public appearances, and that's the only time we're going to have resident input. There'll be no exchanges between residents over a public comment. So so while you can refer to someone else's comment, you will not, you should not and will not discuss with them. We're going to insist that all non-council attendees at the meeting remain muted on the on the virtual screen. If necessary, I will mute all. The council members will then be able to unmute themselves. Certainly, all all can be unmuted for for the meeting. Once in a while, a public comment has benefited and will benefit for some clarification. So the counselors or myself can ask us have one opportunity to ask for clarification from the speaker after they deliver their three-minute comment. It's important to note that for counselors and myself that we're not going to state our opinion. And we will should avoid engaging in discussion with the resident during that question. It's 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 an option so that we everyone feels they understood the public comment. We we're hoping that this makes it easier to enforce the public comments by having them all at the top of the meeting. It's what was the policy for years, although what was was less the policy was that no additional input from non-council members will be heard. So let's see. There. The council will be able to at any time ask for issue a motion to request information because that frequently happens, at which time they may ask me to call upon a commission or a committee representative, someone knowledgeable, to answer that question. So certainly, we're going to treat those individuals as staff, as staff providing information to the council, since we're certainly not going to know the answer to everything that arises. Okay, that's pretty much what I wanted to go through. Let me ask the council if there were any any questions. And just this once, let me ask the those present that if they understand that those orders of business, if anyone hadn't, I'm sorry, not that you understand, where do you have any questions? Okay, hearing none, we can then move on with the meeting to our public appearances agenda item. Recall, this is the time, if you want to make a comment on anything to do with the town, this is your opportunity for the meeting. So you'll do so by raising your hand, if you will, since you're all supposed to be be muted. And I see a physical hand from Paula first. See, the Bob has raised his hand using the virtual hand. The advantage of that is, as most you know, if somebody raises their hand, they're they're they move to the top left of the gallery view. And that's also listed that that there's a hand raised. Okay, so I'll call on Paula for her for her public statement. Paula, go ahead.
Okay, well, I'm here on behalf of Peggy Konas-Buer, Bob Buer, Arlene McCrea, Georgia Cole, and myself regarding a letter that we sent to the council and posted on the website about our concerns of unintended consequences as a result of the council's adoption of Robert's Rules and our suggestions to remedy those concerns. The council stated reasons for adopting the rules were fairness and efficiency, but we're primarily concerned that residents actually have less opportunities to voice their opinions if an issue is raised during a meeting and a motion to vote is introduced. Please see the letter for more details. I'm going to summarize our suggestions, which encompass our main concerns. Even though John has addressed some of these, I think we still need clarification. Number one, acknowledging that Robert's Rules of Order are quite intricate and long. It was suggested during the January town meeting that the council adopt a specific set of sub-rules for use in town meetings. We request that the councils clarify which of the rules the council meetings will operate under in the future. That's still vague. We suggest that a clear explanation of the adopted rules be published on the town webpage, newsletter, and a specific town alert, and that a direct link to the adopted set of rules and Q and A be posted on the homepage. And when the agenda for town meetings is sent, that a reminder to read about the policy on the website is included. To avoid potential manipulation of the rules during council meetings, we also suggest that if a resident or counselor states that a rule has been violated, that that specific rule adopted by Washington Grove be cited. Number four, during the January Town Council meeting, Mayor Compton noted that the council could decide to allow residents' comments about items on the agenda. As he said previously, items were only allowed to be talked about that were not on the agenda. The information on the town website is a little vague regarding this, so we suggest that the council clarify this on the website. I think it was already confirmed right here that that is the case we can. Number five, we strongly suggest that the council open the floor to include an additional round of public comments, length to be defined before a vote is taken on a motion. Since Robert's Rule saves time, this extra comment period should be feasible. And we are respectfully asking for a written response from the council addressing our specific suggestions. Please. Thank you.
Maggie Ball? Just for everybody's information, that was two and a half minutes.
I raced.
All right, Bob?
I have a comment on the vacant house proposal to actually amend it to to broaden the inspection requirement that the owner has to submit when they make the application from just a pest inspection to a to a house inspection. These are these are commonly done whenever there's a real estate transaction done. So there are many available home inspectors to to do this sort of thing. It could either be just the the typical home inspection report, or it could be a tailored set of questions that the town wants the inspector to to do. I think that the advantage of that is is that we get a whole lot more information about the status of the house. The other the other suggestion is that since there are a number of houses in town that are considered vacant, is that we send some notice to these folks and maybe even the ordinance as as proposed so that they can actually respond. That's it.
Okay. Bob? All right, we're still in public appearances. Anyone else?
I can't find the hand gesture. I would like to.
You you got your right hand there. That the other one was your left hand there, John. All right, Jonathan, you're on.
All right, hi, everyone. I hope not to take more than a minute of the council's time tonight. So I want to speak on item 11A, which is the playground. So I sent a letter to the mayor and council about a week ago about the playground work group and what we would like to accomplish. I hope that the council has had time to read the letter from the work group. I just wanted to add that we're really excited about the group's energy and enthusiasm in gathering ideas and input already. So this is going to be a huge collaborative effort, and we're really excited to keep the momentum going over the coming months and probably even longer. In the short term, we're going to be developing a master plan for the playground and keeping with the Grove's history and feel while adding what we feel is adding value for children and families and all others who would like to use the park. So I I just look forward to working with the council and the mayor on this effort. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jonathan. All right. I don't see anyone else. Okay, so we will then continue to the next item on the agenda, which is the Treasurers Report. And we have Jean. Where are the town treasurer here to answer questions and add anything that she wishes?
Yeah, usually you put it up on the screen, John, if you want to do that.
In the process, there you go.
There we go. Okay, I'll just make one quick comment at the top. The public utility property tax, I was surprised there was nothing yet. I went back and looked previous years, it really comes in in the second half of the fiscal year. So hopefully this February, I should be seeing some of that. It usually comes the middle of the month. A little farther down, since we have the stump contributions coming in, you'll see I'm keeping track of special money that was not budgeted for coming in. I'm tracking that at the very bottom, so you'll see that comment. See below for tracking of new funds. And yay, we are selling equipment. We've sold the skid loader. We've sold the truck. And hopefully, a few more items will go, trying to clean up the garage area. Therefore, freeing up some space for some items that are currently stored outside can come in undercover. And the area that where like Summer in the Parks stores some things, Holiday Show has sometimes stored some things can be better organized, found, and reused. Going down farther into the expenses, the only comment I wanted to make was in the parks section. Yeah, farther, 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 farther. There we go, right there. We have received approval from the folks that responsible for the Nikos Trees Fund and the George Payne Fund that we can release, fully release that restricted revenue and apply it to this year's expenses. So you'll see that reflected in that. And I understand another check came in this afternoon for the stump carving. I have not seen it. What I do know is 4,050 has been donated, which will be matched dollar for dollar by the town. And we'll see what came in this afternoon after I picked up my mail. Stay tuned for that, but the town is only committed to 5,000 on that one. My understanding is we think it'll get scheduled for July, so the money will actually be spent next fiscal year. And that is really the bulk of what I was going to comment on. At the very bottom, you'll see where I've tracked the fund balances. We still have the Meadow Grant deferred revenue to be spent. We have donations of about 1,000 for the Terry Cox Memorial. I'll have to work with F and B on how we're going to use that money. And that's where the stump carving is being tracked. So that is all I wanted to make comments on. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay.
I think Kathy has a question.
I just want to tell you that that check you were waiting for was $500.
Whoa. Nice.
Okay.
Nice. So that is what we have.
All right, any questions? All right, hearing none, we need a motion or we're hearing no questions. Anybody object to accepting the Treasurers Report? Saying none, we have accepted the Treasurers Report. Great. So next item. Jean's going to just review, Jean, the imminent steps in the budget process.
Yeah, the the budget process this Saturday, I think you might have seen a Grove Alert went out today. I will hold, I guess you could call it office hours for 30 minutes for anybody who wants to learn about the process, have questions, et cetera, et cetera. I will be on Zoom for anybody who is curious on that. Thank you for everyone who has submitted a budget to me. I'm still waiting on a few, but we have, I believe, what is it? The 21st. So shortly, I'll be maybe making a few emails or phone calls just to touch base with folks that I haven't heard back from. And John has up here the complete process. So basically, the the budget I put together, I'm pulling all the the details together that I know of. I call it the Treasurers Draft Budget. And the financial plan, which encompasses the capital budget as well. And then John and I will go through it and tweak to the extent we feel we need to. It then becomes the mayor's draft budget. And then we'll have in March, the council will review that and tweak whatever they tweak. And it then becomes the council's draft budget, which is what ultimately the town will be voting on in May. And along the way, you'll be getting the town, all residents will be getting lots of updates and reminders so that they can weigh in on any item that concerns them. So we're aiming for an overabundance of transparency and education of what the process is.
Okay, thanks, Jean. And this overabundance is in response to the comments in in at the the annual town meeting and after basically to do what we can to encourage residents to participate in the budget process if they are so inclined, and this is this is getting out all of the the timeline for it. So everyone knows when when they they can do that, and that it starts now, of course. So, thank you. Okay, so let's move on then to my report. This month's kudos go to the Commission and Committee Chairs who attended the the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Workshop a week a week ago, Saturday. And Barbara wanted to be sure that we we let everyone know that this is a a key commitment. And everyone participating who is participating to improve our welcoming nature to the town. So kudos to everyone who was there and will be there at the coming at the two the second and the third of the three hour and a half sessions, which will be held on Saturday, February 15th, and then two weeks after that, March 1st. Okay. We I and Peter wanted to be sure that the town and everyone is aware that there will be zoning changes proposed for the zoning at the Commercial Corner. And I'm going to call upon Peter, who's the Planning Commission liaison, to speak to that.
I'm going to make this really simple. We had our Planning Commission meeting last week, and we're 97% there. But we decided to have a I was hoping to present tonight the final amendment, but we're having a work group next Wednesday. And we will be presenting at the March meeting. And so in the meantime, once we after that meeting And so in the meantime, once we, after that meeting, we'll send out all the documentation to the council and put it on the website so everybody can see it, what's happening. Any, okay, any questions or?
Hey, thank you, Peter.
Does that mean it was passed or?
Yeah, I'm sure there'll be no controversy.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, next, next thing to report, as I reported last month, the Meadow Restoration Plan is, has phase one being, being executed. And as I understand it, the tree removal is now scheduled for either this or next week, weather permitting. I don't know how a new snow will impact that, but, but the, the idea is to finish the the tree work before nesting and other, other spring activities for, for our fauna and for begin. Okay, speaking to the, our streetlights. Most of you know that we have had a lighting committee for some years now. They've been spending a large amount of time responding to and working with, I use that working with in quotes, with PEPCO to improve PEPCO's process and options for municipalities to own their own streetlights. Not going to go into that anymore at this time. But once more, PEPCO is submitting a tariff to the Public Services Commission of Maryland with some, with aspects of that, their policy. So in connection with, with potential purchase of the streetlights, I transmitted a letter to PEPCO that was drafted by the lighting committee to start the process of discussing purchasing our streetlights. So this is not purchasing, it is discussing key aspects of that. What will it actually, what actually will it cost? And we need to understand if we own them, what it will cost us to maintain. Some of those specifics remain remain to be settled upon with, with, with this tariff proposal and the process continues. Okay. The Shared Use Path, Pathway Committee Report, Jay Everett submitted, it's in the, it's in the meeting materials. Last month, or since the last meeting, I provided a letter to Eli Glazer, who's the Park and Planning Staff Member, who will be who is putting together the staff report for the mandatory referral of the Washington Grove Connector engineering proposal that MCDOT has been working on with, with, with close cooperation with our liaison committee. So that's, that's in preparation for the mandatory referral. It had been scheduled, but it's now been unscheduled, unfortunately, because the, there, there was a incomplete, I'll call it an incomplete forest conservation review submitted or not submitted. And the MCDOT is going through that process to, to complete the required materials for this mandatory referral. That, by the way, includes meeting the town's forest conservation plan, which, just for everyone's information, doesn't actually apply here. But by reaching out, they'll want a statement of that because, you know, their forest conservation plan, the county's does not apply. And in that process, we're able to via the Planning Commission or Forest, we'll be able to provide a statement of our expectations for for new planting in connection with those trees in Washington Grove at the end of Brown Street that do have to, and other Russian, what have you, that will, will be removed in, during the construction. So Georgette Cole has been preparing and delivering our, our statement forest conservation is met, such as it is. All right, that was the unfortunate. Fortunately, however, MCDOT has stated that, given that the, the, the holdup is essentially a formality. I'll say as a side formalities with respect to the county are always, are always dangerous to, to state. They're going to proceed with engineering while the plan, we get to the planning board's mandatory referral, which will be scheduled once the forest conservation thing is met. Meanwhile, MCDOT agreed with, with the liaison committees and, and my urging that they could go ahead and hold a public meeting, which they would help, would, would hold in connection with the planning of the Washington Grove Connector to present this 35% engineering plan route, how it's connecting to Brown Street. And we're glad, that's going to be held as a hybrid in-person meeting in MacArthur Hall on March 6th at 7 o'clock. And I think that's a Thursday. In the agenda, you'll find a link to the documentation that MCDOT has submitted so, to the planning, the planning board for that mandatory review. It obviously doesn't contain a forest conservation statement, but it contains lots of drawings and lots of drawings. So anyone interested has, will have that, has that link and can look at the plants. Any questions there? All right, now we get to my, I haven't had to do one of these in a while, but we, we need to do it. And that is that we, we need some volunteers for our, for that, we need a volunteer for the Historic Preservation Commission. A great appreciation to Samantha Susick for her service as the alternate. But her personal family situation has led her to temporarily at least resign from that position. So we are seeking an alternate commissioner. And I received a formal resignation retirement letter from Charlie Charleston from the Board of Zoning Appeals. Many of you may never have experienced an actual action of the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is actually a good thing. But the charter, charter provides for a Board of Zoning Appeals, which allows residents to request the, a review of a ruling about permits, about most, most often used with respect to construction of fences or, or renovations or plans. Board has three members. Charlie's served on, on the board often on since the 2000s, the best I can determine. I can't give you the exact dates. There have been a few appeals in that period. Mark Hanson, late Mark Hanson, our esteemed former mayor and, and resident was the chair and those, those proceedings were always conducted very, very carefully and thoroughly by Mark. But right now, we currently have a single member and that only because Sat Amagai hadn't realized he was the only person who was last involved in the Board of Zoning Appeals. And so he is, he's, he's going to stay on, but we need two members, two other individuals who have some, some, you know, are willing to apply their, their analytical and skills. And that's, and when I say analytical, in any respect to the town's ordinances and to the board. So hopefully someone, some several, we actually want two members and an alternate to appoint to the board. Okay. That's all I have in my report. We will then move on to an administrative matter which was raised and the council took an action concerning delivery of the town bulletin to post office boxes and Chrome has a I now open that issue, I believe Eva has a motion to make.
Yeah, did you want to put up the, I think I sent you two documents. But if not, I can just read them if I can find them myself.
Which one is it? It's your?
I can, I can also just read it.
Yeah, go ahead and read it while I'm doing that.
Okay, yeah. So, so last time we had approved the motion of exploring giving residents the option of receiving the monthly bulletin in their PO box as well as through email. And so we did kind of explore that with Kathy and with, you know, what that would cost and what that would look like. And in the meantime, also, as I know, there was some discussion about Kathy has changed the formatting of the bulletin so that it does read easier on personal devices, but it also makes it much longer. So given that, you know, we're now playing around with a new format of the bulletin, which is longer, that kind of is partially think, making me think it doesn't make sense to print it out. And also, you know, the bulletin is now often so full of these active clickable links that, you know, a printed bulletin, you're not going to be able to click on the links. So just given, you know, all of these factors, the new format of the bulletin, which again, one of the complaints was that it was hard to read the bulletin on, you know, laptops and phones. And given environmental concerns, since the bulletin has gotten longer, it doesn't really make sense. At least I think it doesn't really make sense to offer the mailed copy. So I move that we continue offering paper copies for pickup in the town office. So if somebody really wants a, a paper copy, they can go and get one from Kathy in the town office. We continue, of course, emailing the bulletins out as Grove Alert. We continue working to make the bulletin easier to read on tech devices, although it sounds like people were pretty happy with the way Kathy did it for the February meeting. And I'm also moving that we do mail out a one-page informational flyer, just a one-time informational flyer to all residents, you know, alerting them to their bulletin options and encouraging them to update their email addresses or add new email addresses with the town clerk if needed. You know, my one concern is that people who aren't getting the emailed bulletins aren't getting all of this information. And so we need to at least one time put something in their, in everybody's PO boxes to, to say, okay, now they know their options. And now they know why it's important to have an updated email on file with the town. Now they know that the Grove Alert is not something they can just delete, whatever, you know. So that is my motion. And yeah, does anybody have any thoughts or questions about that? Oh, and I guess I can show John the informational flyer. I don't know if it's important, but I did kind of create, and of course I'm open to suggestions with this, but I did create the informational flyer that basically just tells people, here are ways to read the bulletin and obtain the bulletin. You know, from a Grove email alert, from the town website, pick up a paper copy at the town office. If you're not getting the emailed bulletin, provider update your email address. Explains why. And then at the bottom, the pros of the electronic bulletin format. So that would just go out maybe on brightly colored paper, I don't know, to every, every resident. And then hopefully everyone will know how to get the bulletin and, and why it's important.
So before I, Peter has, has, wants to speak to this, but before I do, I want to thank Eva for writing up her motion with the explanatory material for everyone so that everyone had a chance in advance and certainly now to to understand the, the motion. And now also we have it in writing, which makes it much easier to record. I guess I would say that formally, what we should have done is you should have made your motion, which granted was long, and then, then done all your explanation afterwards. That's the first right of the person making the motion is to, is to
Oh, that's true.
But that's fine, you did it all together. We need a second. We don't, we ought to have a second, so somebody.
Second, Barbara.
Barbara's seconding. Okay, Peter, then you're on.
I hope, John, you're impressed that I raised my hand for the first time. Maybe Robert's rules demands that, I don't know. Eva, that's a fantastic job. Communication is so important. And you've covered everything. I just, I'm just curious, did you or Kathy find out why so many people were not getting?
This time, I don't, I don't know.
Okay, yeah, let me, let me answer that.
That's not for tonight.
No, well, it is. This was, appears to be a problem with the, the mailing list outfit. Because the major, vast majority, not, the, the, a large majority of our email addresses got the bulletin, a subset, a not insignificant subset apparently did not. We're still trying to work on why that happened. Have we, do we, you know, we said, I said out of Grove Alert this afternoon. No, no comments on that yet, Kathy. I was going to ask Kathy to reach out to the people who, who were, were, did not get the bulletin to see if they got the alert, to see if this is a recurring problem or a one-time glitch. So apologies to everybody. Go ahead, Kathy.
I just wanted to say one thing about what, what Eva was talking about with the bulletin and changing of the format and all of that. And that was really Marilyn Frye. She'd worked really hard on that and did it. And I didn't really have much to do with it, so I want you to know that she did. She is also working with me on trying to fix this problem with the MailChimp software or whatever. So we'll get it. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, thank you to Marilyn, if she's here.
Yeah.
Okay, so the council were open to discussion of Eva's, of the motion on the floor.
So a great job to see to see the, to see the process and to gather, you know, take the time to gather the information and to come to a, you know, a decision based on, you know, finding out. No, so great job on that.
Barbara, I think you went.
Yeah, I was gonna basically say the same thing, that Eva, you were really thorough in this and you looked at the different sides of it and you weren't just stuck on, you know, doing one thing, but really open to what was going to be the most effective thing. And I think we all appreciate that. So I'm definitely in support of this plan.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion, I will repeat the motion that is on the floor. That is that the town continue to offer paper copies for pickup in the town office. Continue providing emailed bulletins only. Continue to look for ways to make the bulletin easier to read on tech devices. And to mail out a one, one-time, a one-page informational flyer alerting everyone to their bulletin options and encouraging them to update or add their email addresses to the town's email. So all in favor, raise your hands. So all in favor, raise your hands. I count. That's unanimous, six in favor. All right, thank you. In which case I will now try and find my agenda so we can move on. There it is. Okay, so the next administrative matter, which, um, arose in, uh, several, uh, respects, um, um, partly in, in discussions that the playground work group had and then then other discussions that, uh, our meetings liaison Peter Negrud, uh, was involved in, and that is resurfacing the basketball court. So I'm going to, I, I believe, so we have funds in our budget, uh, that provides for maintenance, uh, I forget exactly, oh, I, I, it's in the, uh, it's in the, um, thing. We have a playground refurbishment budget item, um, which, um, may, uh, may suffice to do that, so we would, we, um, uh, I think I, in order to put the council on record regarding the playground, hopefully Peter, you'll offer the motion, uh, if you will, to do whatever you want to do.
I can make the motion. I move that we resurface the basketball court with the remaining fiscal year twenty-five funds from the playground.
Okay, second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so the floor is open to discussion of this proposal.
Yeah, I can just say, I'm looking at the, looking at this right now, that we have, um, five thousand dollars for playground refurbishment in the budget and two thousand five hundred for playground equipment and supplies. And as far as I know, we have not used any of that or very, very little, maybe we've used a little, but, um, so we have, you know, quite a bit of money left over in twenty-five, fiscal year twenty-five that we can use. And I think Peter's been getting quotes, right? So he can speak to that.
Okay, so we have, we have two contractors that are gonna come in probably next week. And, um, one, one I've used at a different location who is very, um, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure he's gonna come at a very good rate for us. But in talking with, I, I don't want to mention his name because he doesn't like publicity, but he was the maintenance director here for twenty years. Um, he's, he, there's two things you can do. One is you can put a kind of like a sealer on top of the basketball court, which would make it shine a little bit, but the court is so old and cracked that it really needs to be resurfaced, which would mean kind of shredding up a, a layer of the existing court and then resurfacing that with asphalt. And then, um, the town with volunteers can do the lining. Uh, Steve has done that in the past. We could do that, but we're not obviously gonna do that. And, um, this maintenance person, um, you know, I was thinking five thousand would do it. He thinks it's gonna be more expensive, like maybe up to fifteen. So when we get our bids, we will have to revisit, uh, what we, what has to be done. I just want to just throw in one other thing that I think is really exciting and out of the box thinking is that somebody mentioned the possibility of also on half the court, you can have a another court going sideways for kids and have basketball hoops there that are a little bit lower for the kids to use, to make it more, um, available for them. Because I see these little five-year-olds trying to throw that ball up and, you know, they can't even reach the rim. So I think that this is a win-win for us. It wouldn't cost us any more money and we would be doing the lining anyway, so all it would be, would be lining and buying the two goals. So, um, you know, already I see some real benefits from the playground group and the, the energy that people are putting into this with the creativity. So I think, I, I guess at the next meeting, if, if it does come over five, five thousand, we'll be begging the council for maybe some more money.
Anyone else have any contribution to this?
This is Barbara, I have a question. So if it comes in over five thousand dollars, then in the next meeting, you'll be asking for more money, but if our budget for this fiscal year is already spent or, or allocated, I should say, where would that money come from?
I would just ask, uh, Mother Treasurer.
Uh, Barbara, we would just reallocate from one budget line item down to
I was, excuse me for interrupting, but I was gonna suggest you just print more money. Okay, but.
Barbara, we would just move, we would find other money somewhere within the budget that we don't think will be spent. And then the council approves that it be reshuffled, basically.
Right. But I would, I would wait until we actually know what we're talking about before we worry about. Because it may, it may come out a lot, you know, I'm, I'm hoping it's gonna come out closest to the five thousand. So it's not that much of an expense.
And, and like I said, we do have, I think, more like seven thousand five hundred because of the two playground line items.
We need mulch, mulch.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we, I anticipate in the spring, we'll be spending money from the supplies line for mulch. Um, so I really don't want to tap that.
Okay.
We can find money elsewhere is if the council proves that we should.
Yeah, yes, yeah, so we can discuss this again at the next meeting.
Okay. The Robert's Rules of Order procedure. We're dealing with a motion on the floor, as I understand it. Always gotta put as I understand it because I certainly am, am more than likely to get it, get it wrong. So, um, there are two ways to deal with this, uh, at least two. One is to, um, simply postpone action on this, motion to a fixed date. You could say the March meeting. Uh, you could say the April meeting, uh, or you could say the workgroup meeting. Um, and then take it back up, uh, when you, you know, and at which point you either proceed with it or you offer amendments. Okay, and you would then propose to amend the motion to say something, uh, that works with, with, with your, with what you think should be done. Alternatively, you vote down the emotion, the motion. I think we could, I have to look and see if it can be withdrawn. And then anticipate a new motion which accounts for the findings in the next, in the next month or two. So something like that has, um, has to happen, um, you know, we, we, the council has to agree what to do with this motion now. Yes, Barbara?
So I move that we postpone this vote until we receive the bid that Peter is getting and Jean goes through, and if the bid is over the five thousand, Jean finds the money somewhere, wherever it is, and then we have one vote on the entire, you know, Magilla, rather than vote tonight and then vote again in an, in a subsequent meeting. So I don't know Kathy, if you got all of that.
I did not, I'm.
So I, I move.
Basically, she's votes to postpone action on this motion until March.
Well, until we receive a bid, uh, and Jean has, and if the bid is over five thousand dollars, Jean has identified the source of the additional funding.
Good. All right, so that is proper, uh, we, we have, uh, we do not, do we need a second? I should have brought up the.
Yes, you need a second. I think Eva was seconding it.
Yeah, I seconded it, yeah.
Uh, okay, so, um, any discussion on postponing action on this motion? All in favor postponing action?
I'm sorry, I have a point of information.
Oh, absolutely.
Um, do, eh, for, do we need to have a competitive bidding process if the, if it's more than five thousand dollars?
Absolutely.
And we will, we have at least two people that are gonna be bidding right now and we need more, we can get somebody else.
Right.
Is it, do you need three? Is that what the rule is?
Well, I thought that we need to put it out for bid as opposed to.
Yeah, unfortunately, we probably have to put it out for bid, so. Yeah, uh.
Is five thousand the threshold?
Yes.
Okay.
So if somebody says to do what you want to do and it's going, definitely going to be over five thousand, um, or can't reasonably divi- be divided into under five thousand dollar, um, parts. Yeah, then we need to do that and, um, so we would need an R F P. It can be the world's shortest R F P, but
Right.
Usually, you know, specifies.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, our R F Ps are very formal, that's, uh, that's to, that's to en- ensure that, for the council to ensure that what we want is very clearly, um, um, put out there to any potential bidders. Um, so it's, it, it only needs to include the, the key items that we look at, so. Keep that in mind, I think Bob brought up a valid point. The, 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 um, option that you, was, was unsaid and I'm sure everybody recognizes if this process was to drag out into fiscal twenty-six, you put the money specifically into fiscal, fiscal twenty-six, just increase the amount. Okay, we're moving to a vote on the postponement, um, so all in favor? Okay, that's all six of you, um, the person is postponed. Uh, Matt, um, takes us to our unfinished business, which is resolution twenty-two-five oh-one. Vacant properties registration and maintenance standards. So it's unfinished business, so discussion, um, is in order. I'm gonna call on Mary, um, to, uh, start us off.
Okay, you have to help, help me out here. So, um, should I be making a motion to withdraw the resolution and then reintroduce it as the ordinance? Is that the best way to proceed with this?
Yeah, that's certainly, I think that's the best way to proceed with this is to, um, is to, uh,
Or lay it on the table.
A non-judgmental way, um, and, um, and then introduce it as the ordinance revision. So once again, I'm Let's see, the.
This is Barbara, I'm sorry for speaking out of order, but you could, uh, amend it, you know, you could just move to, uh, amend it in the way that the new version reflects.
Well, absolutely, but it's a total replacement, Barbara, because it's an ordinance which and yes, certainly going to incorporate a fair amount of the resolution and almost all of it as a matter, but it's been recast in a, in a way that more fits in, in ordinance, so, um, I mean, yeah, you could, you could do it that way, um. What, what you can do is you can, um, lay it on the table. Lay it on the table means you put the resolution away indefinitely. And then you can propose this, then a, a new motion can be to, to, for, uh, for an ordinance can be introduced. I think that's what I would do at this point. There may be, there's certainly other ways to deal with it. Barbara just expressed one, but I think since the motion called for the resolution and this is a big difference, this is doesn't seem like it, but it is a big difference. It's, it's an ordinance, so it has to be inserted into our, our ordinances. It is different.
Okay, so I will make a motion to lay that motion on the table and to reintroduce a new motion to, um, adopt, um, the ordinance to require the registration of vacant properties and establish vacant property maintenance and security standards. Amending Articles one and nine.
I think we need to do that in two steps. First is to lay out that needs.
Okay. Okay, I move to lay the resolution on the table.
I'll second that.
Okay, so Peter's second that. Any discussion of laying the resolution on the table? All in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, the resolution is, uh, put away, um, and, uh, Mary?
You want me to, okay, so I will now make a motion to, um, to adopt an ordinance to a step, to require the registration of vacant properties and establish vacant property maintenance and security standards, amending Articles one and nine. Do you get that Kathy?
I will, I don't have it right now.
It's, uh, it's, uh, it's in the, uh, the ordinance.
Ordinance.
I'll second the motion.
Who is that?
Rob.
Rob, thank you.
Okay, uh, let's, uh, um, it doesn't require any vote, but now we have the, um, this ordinance on the table, uh, uh, in front of the meeting, as Mary just brought it. So, uh, Mary, you want to speak to the ordinance at all?
Um, basically, we just, as you said, took the resolution and pretty much intact, just put it in the form of, um, an ordinance and figured out which, um, ordinance it fit best under and we decided it was um, best under the, um, Article one, which is public, public nuisance and, um, and it, it fit quite nicely in there, um, without a whole lot of changes. In fact, I don't think we really changed anything, it's just the, the wording and, and, um, some of the, uh, some of the numbering. Um, that was in the original resolution. And, um, took out the, in the resolution, we had the, um, citation and fines and, and uh, as part of the resolution, but we took that out and moved that into the, um, into Article nine, which actually deals with specific, um, fines for, um, for citations, so that's all in there but separate.
Okay. Is there any dis- council care to discuss any of the specifics of the, once again, we have, uh, we, we have previously discussed it to a certain extent, uh, as a resolution, the, the creation of the registry, the requirements, uh, for the registration, the, the, um, phase, the penalties, et cetera, but, uh, may wanna address those again. Barbara has her hand up, Barbara.
So I do have a question about the specifics of the ordinance, but I'm just curious. What is the process when we're doing an ordinance of, of running it by the town attorney? Does it, has it happened or is it going to happen or like, where is that in the process?
Yeah, and we, we, we should run it by Sue Ellen, absolutely. Um, I, in, in, in my written explanation, when I submitted of the, the orders, you know, how we, how we organized and took care of this meeting, I had included a recommendation to the council that when a motion for action is materially altered at a meeting, that, um, it, eh, that the town be afforded, um, an opportunity to comment on the revised, um, the revised specifics. So, um, this is one of those cases and I expected that, uh, you know, that as an ordinance, this, the town should have an uh, opportunity, um, to weigh, weigh in on it. In that period, uh, obviously the thing to do is to have, um, would be to have our town attorney weigh in on it. Even if the town doesn't, uh, weigh in on it, nobody has any comments, uh, we still need, I still think, um, I agree that Sue Ellen should just review it. Um, she may have some suggestions, um, just to ensure it's consistent with her understanding of our.
I just want to address, um, Bob brought up, um, in the public comments, um, asking if we could, um, he felt that we should include as one of the re- requirements, um, an actual internal inspection, um, to make it more complete in terms of information, which, you know, I, I think that would be ideal. The question is how much on the front, um, I, I, we, I guess we kind of considered it when we were initially writing up the resolution, but, um, just considering how much upfront expenses, um, would we require? And the other thing is what, what actually would be in the checklist, um? You know, what do we make? As Bob suggested, I guess we could make up our own check, checklist. I mean, basically our. You know, what do we make, I, as Bob suggested, I guess we could make up our own check, checklist, I mean, basically our concerns are mainly fire safety, I would, I would think. So do we make like the specific, um, you know, fire safety checklist that maybe we could get from, you know, a, a housing inspector, but. You know, then the question would be, you know, do they call the inspector, is it our inspectors, I mean, there's, you know, there are kind of. Um, details to that, that we would have to, of complexity, I think we'd have to add if we put that in. They will have to get a, you know, a pest, pest company which costs money, um. I mean, I guess a lot of this is how are you going to actually, you know, um, verify that people are doing the things that we're requesting them to do. You know, if a liar, left his trustees on, they need to put in fire alarms, so we're gonna have inspectors, you know, that will require. Someone going into house to inspect, or I guess they can, you know, give a certification that someone has done it, so it doesn't actually require you to get into the house. I mean, this is kind of the sticky part of all this is access to inside people's houses.
Right, and I, I agree with you, Mary, and also, I mean, in an ideal world, it'd be wonderful to have an inspector come in, but. Yeah, I think that we should, this is a great first step for us, moving forward and getting this done. I think this would be a real um, discouragement for people to sign up with this program. And um, I know that my house would never pass an inspection. And I think a lot of the, all the, a lot of those older houses in the Grove, um, would have a very difficult time with it too, so. I would just be happy with passing this the way it is and see how it goes, and then in the future, we can maybe improve on what we're doing.
And actually, we, we do have written in here that the mayor has the um, authority to require an inspection, so. If we feel like, um, yeah, there, if we feel like people are not doing, um, you know, not in um, compliance with the registration. Then the mayor can require an inspection of the premises, so I think we do have that ability to, uh, written in here, again, you know. Enforcing it, but we do have that ability to do that, should it come to, you know, proving that they have done what we've asked them to do.
Yeah, I mean, that, what you're saying, Mary, makes sense, because I do think it's, it's often like a case by case basis. And so having that stipulation that if, if needed, the mayor can require it, but we don't necessarily have to require it for every. Um, everyone, but, and, and yeah, I, I mean, we can always add to this later, I guess, like, see how it goes and. Like, like Peter said, it's a good first step.
And it, and it is the sticky area, which is, you know, kind of putting a. A magnifying glass on the vacant houses that, um, as Peter said, some of the, they, you know, the inhabited houses might not pass, so. You really have to go back to what, what it is that we're trying to do here, and we're, we're concerned with safety. Primarily fire safety and, you know, pestilence, so, you know, public nuisances like that, not, not enforcing. You know, other, other parts of, you know, maintenance or, you know, what's going on inside a house, because then, then it becomes unfair. And as to, as to um, Bob's comment about notifying people, um. I think that's nice, but I'm not sure how we can notify somebody until we've determined that they fall under. Under the requirements, that makes sense.
Here, uh, where is it, where is it, requirement? Sorry, I'm not as. Somewhere we have the. Here, vacant property not registered. The town will be, uh, will issue the, uh, party a notice, and then they must register it within thirty days and pay the fee. If they fail to do that, there is a, there is a late fee, it was called a fine before, but. Want to call the fines, we discussed that the fines all fall into, into Article nine, but a late fee. Well, they should, to the extent we can do it, they should all be in one place, uh, but a late fee is something else entirely, so this is a late fee. For not registering, um, which um, here says it is two hundred now. Somebody may simply not pay the late fee. So if they haven't paid the late fee, you then go on to this, which um, and the late fee, um, you know, the. Depends on whether they're protesting, you know, oh, it's not a vacant property or another, or not, but once the, once the late fee isn't paid. It will be in violation of this section, and then the citation and fines would apply. All right, the citation and fines that apply are pretty severe, actually, they're not severe. Except for the fact that they're a hundred dollars per day, so this will add up in a hurry. Mind you, they, they, you know, might be worth it to go to court to protest, oh, but I wasn't, uh, you know, it wasn't a vacant property. And they, they, therefore I don't owe anything, um, but that, that would be the procedure, um. And, and that, that's the enforceability with respect to having fail at, if, if the town feels that a property should have been registered. That's what this is about.
So I, I guess my question, this is just kind of coming to me, we say the town will determine, is that gonna be you, John? To look, look at the requirements, whereas, Mary, okay.
I mean, of course, the council could in principle direct the mayor, I mean, you always have an option to, remember, the mayor is the. Administrator, uh, the kind, normally you wouldn't expect the council to get involved, you know, maybe counselors. Say, oh, look, this property's in bad shape, have they met the registration answers, no, um, you know, can you do, we should do something about that.
So this will start with, with you, the town, making the list, okay, awesome.
You know, um. Asserting that the property should have been registered.
Okay, great.
Well, the, one other thing, well, the thing up here on this inspection section, which is what it was in the resolution. There, um. We've discussed this not, a number of times, this has been discussed, um, look, if, if, if the town, we feel there needs to be an inspection. And we order that there be an inspection, wh- what is the enforcement on that? All right, and that is not in this ordinance specifically. So I've put in this comment, um, you know. Should, should a, uh, a provision for issuing citations. Based on the inspection be, um, be here, so that raised two things, one is. How do you enforce that they do an inspection, and that could be done the same way as we just. Just outline, as, as the ordinance says, you know, there's a fine for not doing the inspection, and then if there's no, if the fine isn't paid. It then uh, uh, segues to the, uh, the infraction, a municipal fact, it's not a fine, it's a late fee. It's a, a fee for not doing the inspection. And then it goes to that hundred dollar a day, a, a day thing, so that's the first thing about not doing the inspection. But once again, um, you know, you know, um, uh, what, what, what if the inspection reveals that something should be done? Need to say something that, uh, about, you know, uh, uh, correcting. You know.
Well, basically, it's complying with, because what you're inspecting to see if they've complied with the requirements. So they're specific, so it goes back to that. Because, because this just says, um, require an inspection, enforcing insurance compliance with the provisions of this ordinance, so it's pretty specific. About what that inspection is for.
Right.
So it would be fire alarms and. I guess, fire alarms and.
Yes, and.
Press control.
Yeah, um, fire code.
Actually, only be fire alarms, whether electricity's on or off, documenting of, you know, any of those things.
These are the things that, the point of the inspection is to ensure these are, this is the case.
Exactly, yeah.
So maybe we can, uh, in, in the.
And then you, you can find them until they comply, or?
Well, yeah.
Or you give them a period of time to comply and then.
Inspection shows they're in, not in compliance, they have whatever number of days to meet, meet it, after which the, the fines and sue. Yeah, so, uh, my, my suggestion is we consider how to, uh, how, the language that would. Could be added to, put some teeth into this inspection.
We, the town would ultimately have to go to court to, um.
Might be, yeah.
Well, they, if they won't let you in the door with the inspector, then you have to go to court. Yeah, I think that's where the breakdown will be, they, they, you can't get anybody to go in unless somebody lets them in, unless you have a court order.
Yeah. My, I think that would be very helpful to actually put that in writing in here that the people see, because I think that would be a good motivator for them to know we're serious about this.
Oh, that's, um, it, well, you, it's in this Article nine, so way down here where we. I, I, thi- this is only the change to Article nine. That, that section fourteen of Article one is here, but the rest of Article nine. For how you collect, if you can issue a lien on the property, all of that stuff is in Article nine.
Okay.
And go to court, et cetera, et cetera, you know, the town has those options, those are specified.
Why, why are you asking that question? Aren't you asking that question, how you do that?
Yeah, you're directing your question to Rob, right?
No, I, I'm, I'm directing it to you, what you, what you put in yellow, highlighted, your questions? It, it seems like they're self evident.
No, there's nothing self evident about this, how, how do we go, uh?
You're the only one, you just said, you already said, you're the only one that can issue a citation, you're, you're the only enforcement we have, so.
It doesn't provide for a citation, it just says we should, there, we can, we can ask for an inspection. If I've missed it. Um, see, then this deals with the vacant property not registered, unpaid fees. Well, the only fee so far is, is for not, for the registration fee and this late fee that's in here. And then it just tells you how the violation should, the notice should look, so, but there's nothing, it needs to be, to be explicit, that the, yes, the. You know, if, if this doesn't happen, what happens?
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, okay.
Doesn't have to be huge, it just.
Yeah, 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 okay.
If you want, you can take a look at section thirteen of Article one, which deals with condemnation of buildings. It goes on about inspectors and the pro- and, and the process and the notices. So, yeah. All right, so look, we have the option of uh, voting on this motion. Um, if someone wants uh, to propose to postpone till March tenth, action, uh, you know, uh, any action on this motion. I recommend we do that to allow time for, for the, the town attorney to uh, um, react. And also to come up with language, if you will, to what we were just speaking about, to amend it um, slightly.
Okay, so I should make a motion to postpone.
March tenth, yes.
Till, until March tenth, decision on this motion. Okay.
Barbara seconded, any discussion on the postponement? All in favor? That's unanimous.
Right.
But now, now we're dealing with an ordinance, um, you're all aware of the process, you know, in favor of, of, of a. You need to have a public hearing, there needs to be notice, I think there needs to be notice. I'm forgetting, it's, it's not, I don't think we have published it in, in a newspaper, but we have to do notice and a few other, uh, simple things.
I think, isn't the, the newspapers just for the Article seven, is that right?
Yeah, I think.
I think you're good.
Yeah, exactly. Right, all right. So, um, we are now on to our other regular business, which um, is the town council reports. Thank you all for your town council reports, um, I've picked out some things of note, after which you, any counselor may. Comment on, on, on their report if they, they feel it's worth it, uh, uh, doing it here, um. So Eva wrote in her summary of the playground work group, um, activities, um. Uh, and as we heard from Jonathan Dale, the work group intends to develop a comprehensive playground plan. For review and approval by the council, and um, they plan to propose budgeting some funds for fiscal twenty six. To begin in implementing the plan once the plan is, um, is that, is, is approved. I'm, I'm speaking for Eva particularly here, um, she wants to, uh, in respect to the playground work group. Kudos to Oscar Ramos, who's been cheering that group and the entire work group, especially Jonathan Dale, Peggy Boer. And Arlene McCreehan for their energy, uh, time, energy and positivity put into the new playground effort. You can read more in her report, of course. For the Gateway Committee, Peter reported that, uh, they have been discussing the pros and cons of creating a ten foot cleared strip. Along both sides of Railroad Street. So, um. That is a, an interesting idea, uh, that is being discussed. With regard to maintenance, um. Peter also reports that the, 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 the snow, uh, and ice, uh, was a challenge, obviously, but it was. This may be, be, um, be old news, but it's important. To, to recognize that we, um, the, 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 the salt policy. Had very beneficial effects. Uh, Barbara reports from the HPC that they continued to work on a proposal. Uh, to bring to the council and the town to install commemorative language at the former sites of historic buildings. Read more about that in her report, from the Planning Commission, several things, uh, Peter note. Again noted that, uh, Peter notes that, um, the Planning Commission has been discussing. Uh, and may produce a, uh, well, uh, make a proposal. Note, they haven't yet, this is discussion of, um, amending the ordinances, uh, to require only the town permit for fence. Installation, uh, and remove the requirement for a Montgomery County fence permit. And finally, uh, back to Railroad Street, the Planning Commission, uh, is proposing, is proposed to, uh, use the survey funds. In the current year's budget to survey, uh, accurately, um, the town property lines, uh. Uh, along Railroad Street. All right, so, uh.
Hey, John, so can I just add one thing from the gateway? Because having freshly come off, um, pickup duty on Saturday, you know, Jonathan Dale. Organizes that with donuts and coffee, and we only had, um. Jay and Liz did Railroad Street afterwards, but I don't know if, I, I'm sure everybody on this call drives along Washington Grove Lane. And Railroad Street once in a while, and I, I, I'm sure you saw the amazing amount of trash that built up along there. It is huge, and you know, the people in town, we're a volunteer organization, right, this town, and everybody just like takes it for granted that this stuff is gonna be picked up. And, you know, we've, sometimes we have a lot of people like ten to twelve, this time we only had, um, I think three on Saturday. And, you know, just spread the word, we'll do some more marketing. And, you know, just spread the word, we'll do some more marketing, but. We really could use some more help with people coming out and doing this. It's, it's only once a month, it's really fun to do it. Jonathan will tell you, it's really gratifying to see the streets cleaned after you, after you get over the fact that how annoying it is that people just throw their trash on our streets. So. Just a little bit of a plug and a thank you to all the people that do come out and volunteer and do this. Thankless job, especially Joan and Dan, who have been doing this every week for forever. And, you know, now that they're not doing it because of a few injuries and things, it really makes me appreciate how much of an effort they have made over the years. Really, really great citizens. Done, John.
Okay, hopefully, hopefully the weather might have had something to do with that.
It did, it did.
Not the world's most pleasant activity in, in cold weather, so, yeah, but noted. Anyone else? Okay, well, I could hurry and, and, and actually, we could actually end this meeting at nine, my clock says nine. So the, the next meeting, of course, is March tenth. Any objection to adjournment? Council meeting is adjourned.
Kudos, good job. All right, everybody.
Thank you.
Robert's rule.